I think we're ready to begin, so I would like to call the meeting of March 21st of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
And as I noted before, but just for the record, Commissioner Yakapony is excused and absent this evening. Commissioner Bradley.
Present, and I was present another, another time where I was marked absent again. Check that.
Okay, we'll get to the minutes and make sure that we get you down for the, for the meeting then.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure. Vice Chair Clements.
Present.
And Chair Ruth.
Present.
So we want to change the order, if there are no objections from the commissioner, that the order of the agenda items because, because Lisa Porras will be presenting the item number 7A, which is the housing update, has to leave the meeting early, so we'd like to get her in towards the beginning. So we'll go item five, followed by 7A, and then to six.
Okay.
No objections.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah.
So I will do, we'll do the approval of the, I guess we'll do the, the general public comment, the approval of the minutes, and then we'll, and then we'll do the housing update before we get into the public hearing. And so the, the next item on the agenda is, is the public comment. And so this is, public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda. And the commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act Government Code Section 54954.2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. So we'd like to know if there's anybody on the, on the Zoom call or on the phone who wants to make a public comment regarding an item that is not one of our agenda topics tonight. Sarah or Dara, I'm not sure who's, who's at the controls tonight. Dara, wonderful. Dara, is there anyone in the waiting room for the public comment?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, then we'll, we'll move on to the next topic, which is the now of the approvals in minutes. And so we want, need to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of February 22nd and approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of March 7th. Do any commissioners have comments on those minutes? And before we forget, let's register Commissioner Bradley's earlier comment about the attendance. Which meeting was that?
Gosh, I don't have it in front of me. I think it was the last one. It's the only one in six years I've been absent.
Okay.
I think it was the last one, or certainly maybe the one before that. Absent.
Okay.
Turn the page over, you'll see that I spoke and asked questions and made motion.
Absolutely, so we'll get.
I did miss the pledge of allegiance, though.
Okay.
But I do that in a military organization.
Excellent. I think we got, captured that one. And I see Vice Chair, Vice Chair Clements, you have a comment?
Thanks, Chair. I was, I needed to make a couple of corrections to the minutes from the discussion of the billboard. So I also don't have that pulled up in front of me at the moment. Was that February 22nd then, or 3/7? I think it was 3/7.
Yeah, that was our last meeting.
Okay. I have three corrections. On page two, the second paragraph from the bottom, the, I think the statement needs to read that the lease is not within the authority of the Planning Commission, rather than what it states there, which is the council, which of course it is, I think, in the authority of the council. So that's the first correction. The second, on page three, the second paragraph, regarding the lease agreement, one of the comments that I had made did not make the minutes, so I was hoping that it could be added. That if you could add that I was surprised that the applicant could convey land control to the city and that this would qualify as leasing of city-owned land or city land. And then one last line, I'm trying to decipher my notes, sorry, just a second. On page three, the third line from the, oh, the third paragraph from the bottom, the last line. Oh, I think my comment was that the council should also set guidelines that would pertain to lease renewals and terminations. And then reexamine the business terms. Because that sounds like now the renewal was at the sole option of the applicant. So my comment was that the council could develop guidelines for lease renewals and terminations and then reexamine the terms of the business terms so that the, the renewal was not solely at the election of the applicant. So those were my comments. Does staff need any further clarification, or I could send an email separately?
We got those, and we'll listen to the recording and make sure those are reflected, and this would be in the minutes of February 22nd.
That's right. I said the 7th.
Okay, and I wrote the 7th, so sorry about that.
This is the electronic, electronic billboard, correct?
Correct. Thank you very much.
Comments, other comments on the minutes?
Move that we approve the minutes as corrected.
A second, that motion?
You have a motion? A motion in a second?
Yeah, through the chair, I just want to confirm this is a motion for February 22nd, and then we'll do another motion for the next set of minutes, correct? That's what I would recommend.
Yes, that's totally correct.
Okay, great.
So I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of February 22nd. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garvey?
I will abstain, as I was not at this meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Yakapony is absent. Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. And before we, I'd just like to confirm whether there are any comments regarding the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting on March 7th. That was also a signed topic, but not for the billboard, but for the El Camino Real. Well, hearing no comments, I would entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of March 7th, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
I will abstain because I was absent from that meeting.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a presentation on the Housing Element Progress Report. And this the staff recommends that the Planning Commission receive a, a presentation on the City of San Carlos 2021 Housing Element and will progress report. So there'll be no motion on our part. This is for informational and both we and the public can make comments. Presentation.
Thank you, Chair Ruth. Good evening, Chair and planning commissioners, Lisa Porras, Planning Manager, and I will be making a presentation on this item this evening. Again, this is a yearly annual progress report that is required by the State Department of Housing and Community Development in terms of reporting the progress of the adopted 2015 housing element. And this item involves reporting for the calendar year of 2021. And so the requirements for the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, in terms of what is required to be reported upon, are set by the state. And there is a typo on this slide. It's January 21st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022. So apologies for that error, but just wanted to clarify the year that we're reporting on. There's essentially 10 items that were required to report on. Not all of them pertain to the City of San Carlos in terms of what we needed to do to meet our regional housing needs allocation that was assigned to us back then. But there are some essential ones that, that we are, will be reporting on that's part of this report and what's in the packet. The first is the development activity in the year 2022. Again, there's another typo, apologies for that. And we've used this presentation before, so sometimes some of the past dates get, don't get updated. So we need to report on the applications that have been deemed complete in the year 2021. We also need to describe the building permit activity, what's been entitled, what permits have been issued, how many certificate of occupancies have been issued for net new housing units. We also need to identify our progress in meeting arena. And this is identified by the permits issued under which affordability categories. We also need to identify whether there have been any sites rezoned to accommodate our shortfall housing need. And for San Carlos in the year 2015, there wasn't a big heavy lift that we needed to do, which is unlike what we're doing currently for our 2,735 units that we're planning for today. But back then, there wasn't any need to rezone sites to accommodate any shortfall back then. But if we had, we would need to report on it. So this is a standard template that every city in the state uses to report on its housing element progress. We also need to identify what programs, where certain programs are, you know, what their status is. Some of them are ongoing. Some of them include financial contributions, so they're all listed in the report. Yet next item is for commercial development bonuses that have been approved. This is for projects that are on commercial sites, but that include an affordable housing component. The city did not have any projects of this type. We also need to report on any units that have been rehabilitated, preserved, or acquired as part of our housing element program, and whether any locally owned lands have been, you know, sold, leased, or disposed of, or declared as surplus. And then we also finally need to report on our LEAP grant reporting component. So for the year 2021, what happened in the City of San Carlos? And again, in terms of arena, what we can count is what's been issued building permits. But in terms of overall activity, there were 41 units that were deemed complete and then approved that received planning entitlements. And then 47 net new units received building permits, and those consisted of nine apartments at 530 Walnut, eight condos at 1240 El Camino Real, in which case that project included one moderate low-market rate unit, seven net new single-unit homes, and then 23 accessory dwelling units. So for this period, we can count a total of 47 net new units in 2021 towards our arena progress. So just as a reminder, what was our, our Regional Housing Needs Allocation requirement back in 2015? We had a requirement for 195 very low-income units, 107 low-income units, 111 moderate units, and then 183 units above moderate, for a total of 596 units. So this slide here shows our progress since the year 2015 through the year 2021, just last year. And as you can see on this screen, the year where we had kind of like the largest amount of building permits issued for net new units in the city was the year 2016. These were comprised by the Transit Village Project and also Wheeler Plaza Downtown. And then the units, you know, kind of sort of leveled to where we have seen them before. So where we are today is we have issued a total of permits to construct a net new of 622 units in the city. However, a majority of those, as you can see on this slide here, are in the above moderate, moderate or market rate category. We still have 363 units to meet our regional housing needs allocation. And I would want to clarify this component of meeting our, our regional housing needs allocation. It's definitely a priority of the city, and we have many programs and are currently looking at mechanisms to facilitate the production of affordable housing, and that's, and that's our primary role. We're not in the developer kind of business where the city actively goes out and constructs new units. However, we do partner with nonprofits, as we've seen recently at the 817 Walnut Project. However, what our job really is here at the city is to make sure that we have the appropriate zoning in place and that we have programs in place to facilitate housing, and that we take a look at our zoning standards to make sure that we're not unduly constraining development activity. So what I would like to just share, and I know the commission is aware of this, but just as a reminder, because if we think about just the one moderate unit that received a building permit last year, it seems kind of like a little bit daunting, but it really just depends when these units come online to receive their building permit. But other efforts underway, as the commission is aware of, is our below-market rate ordinance update. As the commission recalls, we had a study session before you not that long ago. And then recently, the city council had a study session that they held to kind of look at the proposals coming forth as part of this below-market rate update. So for the rental development projects, you recall that currently the requirement is 15% of the units. Whenever there's a project that is seven units or more, then 15% of those units need to be affordable. And then of the 15%, there's a certain percentage for very low, and then another percentage for low. And with the below-market rate ordinance, the commission will recall that no changes are being recommended to the rental development projects because of feasibility concerns. However, with ownership developments, the current 15% is being recommended to increase to a 20% in all low-income category with the threshold for the affordable requirement being lowered from seven to five units. So this is one thing that we're currently working on. In terms of development applications at various stages in the entitlement process, we have about 62 net new affordable units pending. We have building permits pending at 560 and 626 Walnut. The planning stages for a new 100% affordable housing project at 100, excuse me, at 1232 Cherry Street, where we foresee about 30 units, maybe a little bit more, at all low-income categories. An additional unit coming online as part of 1257 Magnolia. And then with 808 Alameda de las Pulgas and 155160 Vista del Grande Townhome Projects, we see another grouping of below-market rate units coming online from those projects. And then at 308 Phelps Road, which is still under review, this is a project that would include net new nine single-unit homes. Some of those will include accessory dwelling units, and there will be at least one below-market rate unit. And then just as a reminder, some projects that have already been counted towards the arena, but that are very near in terms of being completed with low-income units coming online, include 1525 San Carlos, where there will be three portable units, 1501 Cherry with four affordable units, and then 17 Walnut with 23 units that are all low-income or, or below. In terms of the programs that the city has in its housing element, we have essentially seven different categories. And there's quite a bit in your packet, and they've been there, you know, since 2015. And these generally have pretty much stayed the same. A lot of them we've completed. Some of them, we continue to provide financial contributions, contributions toward, and some of them are underway, but they all fall in seven general categories that promote preservation of the housing that we currently have. Programs to promote energy efficiency in housing, policies that encourage housing close to transit, promoting second units. In 2015, the, the environment was very different than it is now with accessory dwelling units. So we've completed a lot of updates to our accessory dwelling unit encouraging programs. And then programs that assist in the development of affordable housing, looking at things that we can do to remove government constraints, and then programs to address special needs. In terms of what's going on now for our current housing element update, the commission will recall that we're planning for over 2,000 net new units in the city to the year 2031. We've completed a lot of workshops with the community that started back in November of 2020 and concluded in 2021. We have worked with the community to identify solutions to meet this arena, which is going to include this time an upzoning to different zoning districts, including height increases. And where we're at now is that we're currently drafting the policy documents, the land use and housing, housing and safety elements. And we're going to be targeting, bringing those forward to the commission in May of this year. And then later in the summer, we would go, we would be going before the State Department of Housing and Community Development to review our housing element, which is required, is required part of the process with adoption in the fall of this year, in time to meet state certification by January 2023. So this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
There are clarifying questions from the commissioners? Well, it's, let's open for public comment if there are public comment on this. Thank you. If you would like to make a public comment on Agenda Item 7A, Housing Element Annual Progress Report, now is the time to speak. You can join the Zoom meeting or call the phone number and enter the meeting ID and raise your hand on Zoom or press star nine, then star six to unmute if you're on the phone. And we ask for two minutes per caller, and if you could give your name. Dara, is there anyone in the waiting room for comment on this topic?
Yes, David Chusman has their hand raised. David, I have allowed you to talk, and you have two minutes to speak.
Thanks for the presentation. I just had one question of when do we expect the housing site inventory list to be, or some draft of it, to be available to the public? For the new cycle? That's it. Thanks.
We'll, we'll try to get that information brought out at some point. Thank you for your comment. Dara, is there anyone else in the waiting room for public comment?
There are no other commenters.
Okay, if there are no additional public comments for this topic, I guess we need a motion to close the public comment section. Is that correct? Lisa, you're on.
You don't need to.
Oh, don't you? Okay.
It's technically not a public hearing item, but.
Oh, yes, that's right.
And then through the chair, if you'd like, I could answer that question for in terms of when the site's inventory will be made available. We are, we are currently working on establishing something that's kind of in a, in a format to be presented to the public. But essentially, through the Notice of Preparation process, the NOP that we currently have on the website, there are sites that have been identified for upzoning, and those would essentially comprise our site's inventory. But what we're doing is we're taking all of those parcels and addresses, and we're putting them together in a table. And those would be part of the information that goes out to the public and Planning Commission in time for your May 16th meeting. But in the interim, one could always look at the maps on the, on the website, and if anybody has any question about, about a particular site, they can contact me through email or by phone, and we can, I can verify whether a site is or, or is not on the inventory.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comment or discussion from planning commissioners?
Just a kind of a broad question. Are are we incorporating strategy to this like so many ADUs and ADUs? How many lot splits placed on a lot split? Are we getting that detailed? Do we have to?
Commissioner Bradley, in terms of ADUs, this is something that we are internally tracking, just to kind of see our progress made on basically as a result of the new state laws. And, and yes, with the, with the inventory, with the spreadsheets and the data that's required by the state, they do require that we identify whether a net new unit is a multifamily project, whether it's a single unit or whether it's an ADU. So those are absolutely being tracked by the state. And in terms of lot splits, the state isn't really tracking those per se, but if we do have projects where there was one lot and divided by two, and then we have two new units on that, those are, are inputs into the spreadsheet. So they, so they are reflected, but not necessarily categories categorized by a lot split.
I see. Thank you very much. I just wanted to avoid extra work and also some assumptions made in all entirety, but really reflect what our general plan do in terms of end uses. Thank you. Satisfies my question. Very good.
Okay, thank, thank you. Vice, Vice Chair Clements, comment?
Thanks, Chair. I have a question and then a comment. My question for staff is that for moderate income units, has staff looked at alternative ways to get credit for the units? So in other words, the state lets you calculate to see if housing prices are in the moderate income range for your area and that recorded restrictions aren't necessary. and that recorded restrictions aren't necessarily required for moderate income. And I'm wondering if staff had looked at this as another way to get credit for moderate income. I don't know if the math works in San Carlos. If any units are coming out of the ground in the moderate-income range here, but I wanted to ask that.
I don't believe so. I mean, that's something that I would need to check with my colleagues. I don't know if we've done any type of kind of evaluation or screening in that regard. But that is something, you know, that we can definitely take a look at and see if there's any way, you know, whatever ways that we, whatever is available that we can do, we want to make sure to look at it. And so thank you for drawing our attention to that.
Sure. Yeah. Well, and along those lines, and I know San Jose does that, created its own methodology. And basically, the state, if you create a credible methodology and it kind of holds together, you know, San Jose hasn't gotten any questions on the methodology and have given it some thought. So happy to help provide that to you if it's interesting. The other thing I'd point out is that the bill just passed last year as to the new product that some joint powers authorities can offer where an existing build, they're using it for existing buildings, can be acquired and then income restricted. That's now eligible. That little product is now eligible. There's probably going to be more legislation this session on it, but that might be another way to get some mod units created. My comment is that to someone who's used to much larger numbers than these renacles, I am sad that our number of ELI plus VLI is only twenty-two in several years through this period. And, you know, the I would just urge staff to focus as hard as possible on getting some more deeply subsidized units to happen. So I guess one more question I could have asked when Chair asked for clarifying questions. Could you review again the BMR ordinance and what it, not that it would reach to ELI, but the the proposed ideas about amending the ordinance and the timeline for that?
Oh, certainly. The next step is that it would go to City Council. In speaking with my colleague, Adam Aronson, who was here to present the update, to provide, you know, the presentation for the planning commission study session, he recently took the item to City Council, and it is now being, you know, prepared to be brought for adoption. So it would come back very soon to the Planning Commission for a recommendation and then to City Council.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. And I know it's terrific that you all are looking at the ordinance again to see what's feasible at this time in the market. So I think that's wonderful. But I know that there's no way around subsidizing to get down to the ELI and VLI rents. And so, you know, of all of the city priorities, I know affordable housing is one of the top ones, but I really strongly urge the city to continue to focus on this because these numbers are not good. Thank you.
Any additional comments from planning commissioners? Well, I had one perhaps clarification for the May sixteenth meeting. What would the scope of that topic be? And the second part of this is, can the materials for it, at least some of them, be available ahead of time so that we have more time to study them?
Absolutely. And certainly, that's a big item on the agenda. It would be a study session, so there's no formal recommendation. But the May sixteenth meeting would be a study session where staff and the consultant team would be presenting the proposed draft, land use, housing and safety elements, plus the accompanying zoning. So we would be looking at all of these together in one study session. And again, there would be no recommendation. We're looking for your comments. So what these documents will include will be the draft policy language. So the goals, policies, action items, and also zoning text amendments for how we're going to accommodate, you know, our arena. And one of the things that we're doing as part of our project here is we're kind of, we're doing it all at once. We're not adopting our policy documents and then going back to update our zoning. We're doing it all together because we know we need to. Because the arena allocation for this particular cycle is obviously quite significant, much higher than we've ever seen. And it's not just for us, but for all cities. So a lot of cities are currently using a strategy to kind of get their zoning adopted along with the policy document. So it's done. So we'll be taking a look at that May sixteenth, and that's our target date to bring it to you. So it's kind of a big lift, and I hear you. And it makes a lot of sense to get what we can out early rather than, you know, like the weekend before. So we definitely won't be doing that. We'll make sure to get that out much, much ahead of time so that you have a chance to go through that. And it'll all be available on the website as well for the public.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners on this topic? Well, hearing none, let's move on to our next topic. Thank you very much, Lisa.
You're welcome. And I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing, and Andrea is going to take over the controls for the second part of the meeting.
Thanks, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, the next part of our meeting is the public hearing. And the procedure for a public hearing is that staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing describing this notice, the public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speaker should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This will help the staff in preparing minutes. So the first public hearing item is three eighty Industrial Road, APN zero four six zero five four three ninety. And that's a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow a large-scale commercial entertainment and recreation land use and a transportation demand management plan in the IL zoning district for the proposed business, Auto Vino. Staff, would you like to give your presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners and Chair Roof. My name is Sarah Codona, Contract Assistant Planner with the City of San Carlos. And the item before you is a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow a large-scale commercial entertainment and recreation land use in the transportation demand management plan in the light industrial zoning district for the proposed business, Auto Vino. The site is in the light industrial zoning district with Holly Street located to the south, the Palo Alto Medical Foundation located to the east, the Greater East San Carlos Residential Neighborhood to the west, and three sixty Industrial, formerly occupied by OSH, to the north. Auto Vino is proposed to be the only tenant within this fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty square-foot building. The land use designation is planned industrial according to the land use element in the general plan. And the previous use of the site was warehouse, storage, and manufacturing. Auto Vino is proposed to occupy the building with car storage, wine production, and wine storage, all of which are permitted uses within the light industrial zoning district. And the applicant is proposing wine tasting, outdoor dining, and indoor and outdoor event space, which requires approval of a conditional use permit. Auto Vino's proposed hours of operation are as follows. So they'll be open to the general public for wine tasting and outdoor dining Monday through Friday from nine AM to five PM, and Saturday and Sunday from noon to four PM. They will also be open Monday through Friday from six PM to nine PM for corporate and private events where they will be able to utilize the indoor and outdoor facilities. These events will be between thirty-five and forty people, and there will be no amplified sounds allowed. And everything will be completely shut down by ten PM in respect to the neighboring residential neighborhood. Here is the site plan. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the existing building at this time. And there is an existing shared parking lot between the two buildings of three sixty and three eighty Industrial. And there's a total of two hundred and nineteen parking spaces. Seventy-one of those are designated to the tenant at three eighty Industrial. And the applicant is requesting approval for a permanent outdoor dining and event area, which is outlined in blue. And it is proposed to be, it is proposed to occupy thirteen of the seventy-one parking spaces, leaving fifty-eight parking spaces available for the entire building at three eighty Industrial. Here is the building's floor plan. As you can see, most of the space, which is outlined in orange, will be occupied by high-end luxurious cars. And the area to the left of the cars is where wine production and wine storage will occur. And the green outlined area is where the designated wine tasting and indoor event area will be. And on Packet Page Fifteen of the staff report, it outlines the square footage breakdown by each use. And this is the floor plan of the proposed outdoor dining and event space. The applicant is proposing to occupy thirteen parking spaces. And within these spaces, there will be two trailers, a vintage food bus, and a pizza oven. And located in the middle will be tables and chairs for guests to sit and dine. And surrounding the enclosed area, there will be nineteen wine barrel landscaping planters. Here is the parking breakdown of the required number of spaces by use. A TDM is required due to the newly proposed use increasing the average daily trips by more than ten percent. And with the implementation of a TDM plan, it is anticipated that it will reduce the number of trips by twenty percent. And the required number of parking spaces went from thirty-six spaces to twenty-nine parking spaces. And as mentioned before, the applicant has fifty-eight parking spaces available, excluding the thirteen spaces for the permanent outdoor dining and event area. And staff finds that the applicant is sufficiently meeting their parking requirements. The TDM plan was prepared by Hexagon Transportation Consultants on February third, two thousand and twenty-two, which anticipates a twenty percent reduction in vehicle trips by using the following measures, which are a new employee orientation welcome packet, a transportation kiosk, carpool and vanpool parking and incentives, long-term and short-term bicycle parking, and subsidized transit passes with the options of one of the following, which are Caltrain Go Pass, Samtrans Way-to-Go Program, or reimbursement on travel expenses, and also participation in Future Transportation Management Association. The applicant mailed their business proposal, site plan, and floor plan to all property owners and occupants within a three-hundred-foot radius of the site, inviting them to attend a neighborhood meeting that was held on December second, two thousand and twenty-one, at six thirty PM. One neighbor from the Greater East San Carlos Residential Neighborhood attended the meeting showing support of the project and was excited about a business like this coming into the neighborhood. And on March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, staff mailed public noticing to all property owners and occupants within a three-hundred-foot radius. And since, staff has received no comments or concerns about the project. Here is the motion. And I would also like to make a note that there was a mistake in the staff report's motion. And the motion that should be read into the record is the motion that is on the presentation slide. And staff, as well as the applicant, are here to answer any questions that the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Are there clarifying questions from the planning commissioners before we open for public comment?
I just need to say that I went to visit the site on my own just day and did talk with a couple of fellows that are working on the project and involved in it, and answered questions. So I have concern about those. And I'm excited about it, like the resident organization fellow said. It really looks great. If you like multimillion-dollar Italian cars and pizza and wine, this is the place to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Garvey.
Thank you, Chair Roof, and I will echo Commissioner Bradley's comment. This is a lively and fun addition to a new part of San Carlos that normally doesn't have that. And so I think it's a nice addition. I had two general comments, maybe questions about the transportation demand management plan. Two things jumped out at me that were incentives, and I was curious as to how long these incentives have been in place. The first one was Star Store, our partners at commute.org. If you travel to and from San Mateo County on transit, you can earn points on something called a Star Platform, and then you can redeem these points for stuff. And, you know, there's many people who don't get out of their cars and don't take transit. They just need a little bit of a nudge. So a real shout out to whoever thought of this great idea to give points, and then you can redeem them because it just might be enough to nudge someone into doing it. And the second one is the vanpool participant rebates. They will pay half of the vanpool recipient's fare, up to a hundred dollars a month, for a total of five hundred dollars. Well, this is another fabulous incentive to just get folks who might not be thinking about it, thinking about it, and maybe doing it. And then once they do it, maybe they'll do it for a longer period of time. I was curious, Sarah, how long have these incentive programs been in place? Are these new, and I just haven't really called them out before? Or have these been around for a while? They're great ideas.
I'm not sure exactly how long these programs have been within commute.org, but I do know that commute.org is always trying to find new incentives and programs. And they might have more information on their website. But Andrea, if you maybe had any more information on commute.org?
I actually don't have any additional information.
Well, I'm glad we're talking about this tonight. It's just, I just wanted to call out these, I think commute.org is really doing, just as you say, they're trying to think of new ideas for people that are on the fence and to incentivize them. And I thought these were both really fabulous ideas. And if they're around in our TDM for this project, I have a feeling they may be around in future TVMs for future projects, and I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
And through the chair, if the commission is interested, that is information we could gather and give to you as an informational item in the future if you'd like to know more about their programs.
I think I'm okay. I'll go to the website, and I think I can probably learn more there. Thank you.
Any additional clarifying questions before we open for public comment? Let's move to public comment. If you would like to make a public comment on Agenda Item Six, A Three Eighty Industrial Road, Auto Vino, now is the time to speak. You can join the meeting on Zoom, or you can call the phone number. And if you're calling on the phone, press star nine and star six to unmute. And, Dara, is there anyone in the waiting room to speak on this item?
Yes, we have Tim Ryan. Tim, I have allowed you to speak, and you have two minutes.
Well, Cameron, thank you very
Well, Cameron, thank you very much. Uh, hello, commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to speak here. Uh, Tim Ryan, three, three, nine Fairfield Drive. Uh, probably just, um, I don't know, my guess is a couple of hundred feet from Auto Vino. Uh, I, I've visited them, uh, at this current location several times. It's our old location in Menlo Park, and I, I think it's just very exciting to have them in the neighborhood. Um, super fun people, Phil Inga, Buff, their dog Daisy. Uh, last couple of visits, I've, I've spoken with Brian, who makes the wine. Their wine is excellent. Their food is excellent. This side of San Carlos, east side of San Carlos is going to, I think, you know, by the end of this decade, just explode in job growth. We need a lot of venues. We're going to need many more venues to try to keep these workers in San Carlos. Uh, you know, once they, uh, clock off at, at five P M. So this place is, is, is fun. The cars are out just outstanding. I mean, I'm not a car guy, but to watch, uh, those cars roll into my neighborhood. I mean, crazy fun cars, uh, is really exciting. I mean, I was sorry to see Osh go. Uh, it, this is an old neighborhood and Lord knows, we all need hardware stores close by. But to have this in the neighborhood, uh, is, is really exciting. Uh, the only thing that I would add i- is that in Menlo Park, they had the big white tent. And I was able to sit under that tent, eat their great pizza, unbelievable sandwiches. And I like the tent because I'm an old guy. I can't take too much sun. It's a blacktop parking lot. Osh never even came close to filling all of the spots in that parking lot. There's plenty of room for a tent. So please welcome Auto Vino, approve the tent for guys like me that can't take too much sunshine and continue to emphasize the planned growth of East San Carlos. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Dara, is there anyone else in the waiting room for this item?
Yes, we have Angela. Angela, I have allowed you to speak, and you have two minutes.
Hi there. Uh, Angela and Ed Sterling, uh, nine, eight, four, Sylvan Drive, uh, just across the street from Fairfield and, uh, the new Auto Vino, uh, facility. We think it's a great idea. We're totally, uh, on board and really excited to, uh, have uh, establishment that's going to have some pretty cool cars, some entertainment, and definitely some wine tasting in the neighborhood. Uh, it's going to be a little, uh, zest of life that it needs. So, uh, we're glad that you guys are uh, entertaining the idea and supporting, uh, their business. Thank you.
And thank you. Dara, is there anyone else in the waiting room?
Yes, we have Shuri. Shuri, I have allowed you to talk, and you have two minutes.
Surely we don't hear you. Are you on mute?
I'm so sorry about that.
Now we hear you.
I muted myself. Thank you. Um, we, uh, my husband and I reside on Sylvan Drive, and we are welcoming Auto Vino into the neighborhood. We think it would be a very fun adventure, fun company to have in the neighborhood. As classic car fans ourselves and avid wine drinkers, we think this would be a great addition to the area and to locale, and it'd be something fun to do on the weekends. I would also like to, as a side note, um, commend Ms. Condona on an excellent, well-thought-out presentation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dara, anyone else in the waiting room?
We have Marie King. Marie, I have allowed you to speak, and you have two minutes.
Hello, um, this is Marie King and my husband Clarence Johnson. Another family living on Sylvan Drive in very close proximity to this, um, new company. We are also excited as we are wine fanatics and auto lovers. And we also think this is something that's been needed in San Carlos for, for a long time. You know, we don't have very many new type of, um, entities showing up like this in our town. While we don't like all the building that's going on, this is something that we ourselves feel that we will visit and, um, be thoroughly entertained and could spend time with our current neighbors or even meet a lot of our uh, other neighbors that we haven't been able to meet as of yet, you know, in other, uh, blocks. Uh, we have lived in this city for over thirty-three years, so we're excited about this new entrance. The only thing I ask is that we do keep a focus on the noise level and making sure that it does shut off at ten eight, ten P M. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Dara, anyone else?
There are no callers at this time.
And I, I forgot to ask, did the applicant, um, one of, are they present and did they want to make a comment?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, Phil Gerlani and Bill Hagman is our architect. Um, I'm with Auto Vino. Uh, it's, uh, my father and I started the business about fifteen years ago, uh, in Menlo Park. Uh, unfortunately, we were, um, overwhelmed by Facebook took over the, our area that we were in. So we've been looking for a new space for, boy, four or five years now, and I came across this, and I think we lucked out with the perfect, uh, location. And we're excited to, to get open and start meeting our neighbors and, uh, and start doing business in San Carlos.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, has anyone else popped up for public comment?
There are no callers at this time.
Okay, if, if, since there are no more callers, I would entertain a motion to, um, close the, uh, public comment period.
Chair, I'll move that the public comment period be closed.
I'll second that.
The motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Okay, we're now in the commissioner discussion. And, uh, Vice, Vice Chair Clements, do you have a comment?
Thank you. Yes, um. Well, I have to say that to have three residents that will live near this, uh, proposed project to all be in favor of the proposed project, um, I, I think speaks volumes to the, um, excitement uh, in the community for a different kind of use of this space. Um, you know, a lot of times it's hard to figure out how to reuse larger spaces. And, um, I was, um, pretty excited when I read the staff report, and then I went on Yelp. And I couldn't believe how positive the Yelp reviews were of this business. Um, and so to hear that, uh, and I also noticed, by the way, that the applicant, hello, um, had already changed his address on Yelp to San Carlos. Like he sound, you know, they sound excited about being in San Carlos. Um, so I, uh, I, I was, uh, I was impressed by the enthusiasm and, um, felt like the staff analysis was pretty clear and pretty cut and dried, that all the findings were made, that it's an appropriate use of the space. And, um, that, that, that the hours of operation and noise were very contained. Um, and that bottling, what was it, twice a year, really did not seem to be any kind of impact on the neighborhood. Um, potentially around the neighbors. And so, um, I thought this was a pretty, a simple decision, and I was, um, looking forward already to my first visit. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Commissioner Garvey.
Well, thank you, Chair Roof. I'll, I'll echo the comments of my colleagues. This is, uh, a vibrant and fun use of this property in an area of town that doesn't have this kind of use, and I'm very excited to uh, drive my super boring car to one of the events here one day and, um, and check it out. I, I liked reading through the transportation demand management plan and particularly want to call out again the two, um, strong and forward-looking incentives in there for van pools and, um, transit reimbursements and points. I thought those were really, um, not forward-thinking new ideas, and I wanted to call them out. And I think as, uh, one of the commenters said, it's a great venue for corporate events, and there's going to be a lot of Class A office down in that region. There already is some now, and I think that's a great use for that space, not only for, uh, folks like me, but for corporate events. So, um, I think it's a great project.
So I read the project that I didn't, uh, notice, but when I was there today, to the west, there's a nice green grassy hill to view. Uh, nice setting for outdoor dining or wine tasting. Across the other way is Pamp, the, uh, medical was going to be a hospital, but now it's a nice clinic that a lot of us go to. Um, and that's right across the street, so some of them can, I always wondered where those docs and nurses at lunch, you know? Here they can walk right across the street and have a good meal. Uh, it's just, uh, I support the project. It, uh, exciting, uh, to have something like this here. I, I love cars. I thought I had a couple of interesting valuable ones, but when I saw what they had, it's, um, breathtaking. Tell it to yourself to go see them.
Thank you. And I'll jump in with my comment, which I, I also had a chance to, um, to visit the site and, um, I, I feel like the outdoor entertainment area is, um, attractive and, and consistent with the, um, the land use designation there and, um, shouldn't be a problem for the neighbors as long as the rules are adhered to. So, um, it looks entirely appropriate to me, and I think it's a interesting and creative idea. I'm definitely going to go check it out. So, um, um, I think we're all excited. Are we ready for a, um, uh, to bring up the, um, the motion, the motion? Andrea, can you, can you project the, um, the, um, motion? Thank you.
Or does someone else?
I, I'll, I'll say the motion. I move that the planning commission approves the request of a conditional use permit to operate a large-scale commercial entertainment and recreation use and the transportation demand management plan at three hundred and eighty industrial road based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and as conditioned in the conditional use permit.
Make it a second.
I can second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Well, thank you, and congratulations to Auto Vino. Let's move on to the next, next item in our public hearing, which is the comprehensive update to the protected tree ordinance. Would staff like to make a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Roof, Planning Commissioners, members of the public. Uh, I am Ruchadandi, Associate Planner uh, at the City of San Carlos. The next item before you tonight are proposed amendments pertaining to the zoning ordinance, uh, regarding protected trees. Uh, before I begin the presentation, I would like to introduce our project team. I, Andrea Marthersich, uh, Principal Planner, and Julia Hoffman, Contract Assistant Planner, along with our city-retained arborist Ellen Shear, uh, who is with us tonight. Next slide, please. Uh, tonight we are recommending, uh, to adopt a resolution, uh, that the city council introduce an ordinance to fully replace San Carlos Municipal Code Section, uh, eighteen point one eight point zero seven zero trees and amendments to eighteen point four one terms and definitions. Uh, this is pursuant to Government Code Section six, five, eight, five, three, and six, five, eight, five, zero, and the San Carlos Municipal Chapter eighteen point one three six. Uh, this is because when a change in the zoning ordinance, that is Title eighteen, is found necessary, the planning commission, uh, shall hold a public hearing to consider such change and render its decision to the city council. Therefore, we are here tonight, uh, for the recommendation to the city council. In today's presentation, I will be going through the background and history of this topic, uh, summary of the proposed amendments to the chapter trees, uh, questions by the commission and, uh, by the commission, and followed by some time for public comments, discussion, and then the final action. So to, uh, so to give you a little bit of background on this topic, on May tenth, twenty twenty one, the city council held a study session on protected trees, uh, and, uh, and recommended staff, uh, to come back, uh, with a more comprehensive update to the tree ordinance. Uh, and at the same meeting, uh, there was a consensus to go forward and adopt an urgency ordinance. Uh, therefore, on June fourteenth, an interim urgency ordinance was adopted for a period of forty-five days, followed by June twen, uh, June twelve, uh, of twenty twenty one, uh, when this urgency ordinance was extended now for, to allow staff, uh, enough time to work on the comprehensive updates of the tree ordinance. So on, uh, September seventh of twenty twenty one, uh, staff conducted pla, a study session with the planning commission where we received, uh, very, uh, helpful comments from the planning commission. And since then, staff has been working on, uh, incorporating those com, comments within the permanent ordinance. Then earlier this year in February, uh, staff conducted a study session with the planning, uh, with a joint, sorry, not a study session, but an informational session with the planning commission and R D R C that majorly focused on an update to the ongoing work and the completed work at that time and receive comments on the permanent ordinance, uh, work that was conducted by the staff. At tonight's meeting, the planning commission will be taking an action to recommend proposed amendments to the city council for the protected tree ordinance. The intent of the ordinance amendments is to introduce a more comprehensive protected tree ordinance, uh, as requested or as, um, directed by the city council. And then, uh, the ordinance amendments are also to ensure that, uh, the significant and thriving population of large healthy trees in San Carlos is maintained. I would like to note here, the proposed text amendments are indicated from page ninety-six through one, zero, nine within the published packet. In the next few slides, I'll be going through the proposed major changes within the protected tree ordinance that is proposed for recommendation to the city council tonight. The proposed amendments are majorly, majorly built upon the urgency ordinance one, five, seven, two, that was, um, adopted by the city council, um, in July last year. And the proposed ordinance update differs from the adopted urgency ordinance, uh, in few major categories that are uh, underlined, um, in text before you tonight in the, uh, table on this slide. So I will go, um, uh, category, uh, I will explain or summarize it, uh, through the categories, uh, before you. So category one is significant trees. Uh, the height at which significant trees are measured i- is proposed to change from forty-eight inches to fifty-four inches. Uh, this is, uh, proposed to be in line with the current, uh, standard practices. Uh, similarly, the measurement unit is proposed to be represented in diameter rather than circumference, which is also a standard practice. In category two, which is heritage trees, all heritage tree thresholds are proposed to correspond to diameter versus circumference, which was previously used. It is also important to note, uh, that, uh, if you do a direct comparison uh, with the previous, uh, ordinance thresh, uh, heritage tree, tree trunk thresholds, um, the tree, uh, the tree trunk threshold seem to have reduced. Uh, but however, the height at which they are now proposed to be measured is six inches higher than before. So, uh, therefore, uh, the proposed amendments are, uh, a reasonable change and, uh, does not considerably change from what, what it was before. Next slide, please. In category three, that is non-protective. In category three, that is non-protected trees. The non-protected trees, regardless of size, are proposed to add monocot trees, including all palm relatives. This is a new addition to non-protected trees. Under category four, the minimum replanting size is fixed to twenty-four inches box for replant replacement trees, or it is based on a sliding scale per the administrative guidelines. So the administrative guidelines is a separate supplemental document which you can see in your packet as attachment nine. Under category five, that is the replanting tree species. The heritage trees are proposed to be replaced by heritage trees from the heritage tree list and all other significant trees are required to be replaced using the preferred tree list. Now, this preferred tree list is again a supplemental document that is part of attachment nine of the planning packet. The ordinance also specifies that replanting shall happen within four months of the approval unless associated with a development application. Under category six, tree planting, replanting fees are proposed to be introduced when replanting is not possible on site. However, the infeasibility of planting on site shall be at the discretion of the city arborist. So previously, there was no provision of tree fees and this is a new addition. Apart from that, category seven includes definitions. So there were multiple definitions that were added to the ordinance, including trimming, pruning, construction activity, tree protection zone, city arborist and administrative guidelines, which staff anticipates would clarify the ordinance. In addition to the proposed changes as described earlier, the proposed ordinance also includes the following text amendments. Start, staff has worked with the city retained arborist to strengthen the language within the proposed ordinance to provide clarity and ensure effective implementation. The amendments include updates to the following areas, which is before you on the slide, which includes language for tree removal criteria. As I mentioned, defining additional terms, including application submission, submitted requirements and also clarifying language on replacement tree requirements. In addition to the text amendment, staff has prepared two supplemental documents for administrative and internal processing procedures. These two documents are the San Carlos Protected Tree Administrative Guidelines document, which also includes a preferred tree list, which is attachment nine of the staff packet. The administrative guidelines include many, many topics, including size and replacement tree requirements, methods of measuring height of a tree trunk, measuring width of the tree trunk, tree appraisal methods that are recommended to be utilized and then permit application requirements based on each category or each criteria of tree removal. The preferred tree list was also developed in consultation with the city retained arborist, which is suitable for public and private properties. This list is proposed to be used citywide and is proposed to replace the existing list of approved street trees, which was previously commonly used by Public Works and the Community Development Department. The methodology adopted by the city arborist to develop this new preferred tree list is included as an attachment seven. If you if you would like to take a look at that. It is also important to note here that these documents are not included in the ordinance for adoption by the city council, but would remain a separate document that could be later updated easily if required at the discretion of the director in consultation with the city arborist. Next slide, please. The I would like to highlight few staff recommendations that came out from this project. The proposed ordinance, as you as you must have referred to it, assigns significant responsibilities to the city arborist to make major decisions, particularly preparing and review reviewing arborist reports, formulating conditions of approval for tree removal permits and conducting site visits, among many other responsibilities. Also, staff at the Community Development Department lacks the expertise to carry out these arborist specific responsibilities at this point. Therefore, staff is requesting the city council to allocate funds for up to full-time contract arborist to assist in processing applications and implementing the provisions of the proposed ordinance. Any work related to specific properties or development would be paid by the applicant or homeowner. But the city council decision is pending budget approval at the March twenty-eight, twenty-two meeting. Staff believes that utilizing a city arborist for identified task, which I will go over in the next slide, will help in reducing staff's time spent on tree removal applications. As a result, it is anticipated that could lower costs to applicants. For example, the current fees for all tree removal application includes arborist deposit, technology fee and processing fee, and staff anticipates that with in increased budget for up to full-time contract arborist, the back and forth would be reduced and few of these responsibilities could be carried out by the arborist. The changes to the ordinance would allow for the arborist to make the decision on tree removal permits, tree protection plans and development application regarding impact fees. Additionally, staff also received few public comments suggesting to reduce the dead tree removal application fees. So staff worked on that. The comment highlighted how the city's dead tree removal fees are higher than other neighboring jurisdictions. So staff is currently working to check feasibility of incorporating the proposed dead tree application fee changes as part of the comprehensive fee schedule. This fee could potentially be considered considerably reduced if the city council were to approve the budget for the city arborist up to full-time contract arborist. If approved, staff has identified a few long-term projects that the city arborist may also work on, and if so directed by the city council, these include inventory citywide protected trees, research feasibility of citywide invasive species removal program, research feasibility to assist citizens for dead tree removals and research feasibility of providing financial assistance for tree removal, if so directed by the city council. Next slide, please. The City of San Carlos zoning ordinance is required to be consistent with the city's general plan and in order to recommend these proposed amendments, there are certain findings that needs to be made. The orange text is the finding that will be that will be making tonight. The proposed ordinance amendments are consistent with the general plan since it meets the goal, as as I mentioned in the general plan, which is to enhance the urban forest and the actions that are consistence are consistent with the proposed amendments is to maintain and expand the urban canopy, along with action number two, that is review and amend the zoning ordinance accordingly. So staff believes that this finding can be made with the proposed amendments. And the second finding is the ordinance amendment is consistent with the purpose of the zoning title to promote the growth of the city in an orderly manner and to promote and protect the public health, safety, peace, comfort and general welfare. Again, staff believes that this finding can be made as discussed in the staff report for the proposed amendments. This meeting was advertised using various social media mediums, including Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, and email blast was sent out to requested applicants. Then citywide postcard was also sent, which you can see on the slide before you. Staff received few public comments suggesting to reduce the dead tree removal application fee, which we have, which I already discussed in the previous slide. One comment that we received this morning or actually over the weekend was about redwood trees. And this comment was that and was forwarded to the planning commission, but I would like to highlight that because staff is making a recommendation, a new staff recommendation based on that comment, which was which highlighted that redwood trees should not be considered as indigenous trees and should be on a do not plant category in our preferred tree list. So staff is, staff consulted the city retained arborist, who also agrees with the same and therefore staff is recommending to categorize redwood tree as do not plant tree. And within the ordinance text itself, staff is recommending to specify that a heritage tree removal shall be replaced with a heritage tree with an exception to redwood trees. These are the two new recommendations in relation to the public comment that was made is what staff is recommending. Here is the timeline for the protected tree ordinance project. Today, March twenty-first would is the PC recommendation to the city council. April eleventh, we anticipate to go back to the city council with the first reading, followed by April twenty-fifth is the second reading. After thirty days of the second reading, the new ordinance would be effective, at which time the urgency ordinance will become ineffective and would expire. Again, at today's meeting, staff is recommending to adopt a resolution, recommending that the city council introduce an ordinance to fully replace the code section mentioned on the slide before you. This concludes my staff presentation. Again, I'm Ruth Chadande, happy to answer any clarifying questions. We also have with us Andrea Mardesich, Julia Hoffmann and Ellen, who's a city city retained arborist, who can answer any technical questions related to trees. And I'm here to answer any clarifying questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ruka. And let's so
want to compliment you on your presentation, Ms.
Thank you so much.
Are there clarifying questions before we open for public comment? I see Vice Chair, Vice Chair Clements.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask staff to clarify why the removal of the monocots. I don't think the staff memo explained that.
I would like to defer that question to Ellen. Ellen, will you be able to answer that question?
Yes, thank you. Previously, the ordinance referred only to palms and there are some palm relatives that behave like palms but are not botanically palms. So I recommended that we use the word monocot to include those palm relatives. That would be things like yucca or cordaline, Joshua tree, which doesn't grow here, but that's a similar palm relative.
Or bamboo, I see. Could you also just note why those are would not be protected trees? Because, you know, palm trees are very picturesque and I, and do you think a lot of people like them, although they're not that easy to take care of?
Palm trees were listed as not protected trees in the previous ordinance, I believe. So I think maybe part of the reason that they would not be protected is they don't provide significant environmental benefits compared to woody trees. A woody tree has a large canopy and those leaves can absorb pollutants. They can provide shade and cool the surrounding area. They can capture stormwater and direct it downwards. And palm trees really, in the big picture, don't provide those sorts of environmental benefits.
I did not know that. Thank you.
Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you, Chair Ruth. One, one question. Rucha, in your presentation, you mentioned that if you're, if you're not able to replant a tree, there's a replanting fee that you pay in 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 place of that. I'm curious, where does the money for that go? Does it go into the general fund for the city or is, does it go into some sort of a a dedicated tree fund that might be used to plant trees in another part of the city? Can you help clarify that?
That is correct. It goes to the tree fund, which would be, which would be utilized to plant trees, replant trees. That is correct.
Excellent. Thank you. That's my only question.
And and through the chair, if I could just add to that, the fee that would be established for that is not has not been adopted by council yet. So that would be one of the future steps, should it be adopted.
Thank you for that clarification.
I I have a question. I'm sort of trying to look at this from the perspective of a of a homeowner who might have a tree that they're considering removed, which would be, which would be a protected tree. And there's, we've seen a few examples of this come before the planning commission before. So I'm just curious to see how the ordinance would would govern these situations. And one of them is is safety. So if there's a potential for falling, falling branches or the tree is old, the another scenario that I'd like to understand, what's the recourse for the homeowner would be is if it's causing structural damage, say it's growing right next to the house and causing cracking of the foundation or has that. And and the third one is, if if and if you want to build an ADU and there's a tree in the way, and this may be more broadly, what so what can, what would be allowed? And what would, how would that proceed for those three different options, the safety, structural damage and ADU?
So for safety and structural damage, we do have a decision-making criteria, which is tree risk rating and development. Under the tree risk rating, we do have provision where it says that the city arborist may consider danger to people and property in assessing the risk to making a decision. So we do have that provision. So it would be at the discretion of the city arborist when they review the plans, whether that tree poses a risk to the, you know, danger to people and property. So we do have a provision for that. The other question was about ADUs and trees. Is that right?
Yes, that was one of them.
So Andrea, do you want to help answer that question?
Sure, of course. So with ADUs, you know, as as you're all aware, the state has some minimum requirements, which we have to approve, and that is an eight-hundred square foot ADU, no more than sixteen feet tall. So as part of the review of an ADU, if someone were to come in and say, I'd like to build this ADU, but I need to remove the tree to do so. We're not required right off the bat to automatically approve removal of that tree. It would take some back and forth and looking at the plans and really determining a few things. One, you know, what's the health of the tree? Is it a high-value tree? Is there anywhere else to do the ADU that that makes sense and that isn't, you know, a big burden to the homeowner financially as compared to the place they're looking at? So we would first try to determine, you know, how how healthy is this tree? Can we try to say that and is there a reasonable opportunity to do so? Now, if there's not, then we do ultimately, because we have to allow an ADU of that size and height to be built, we would ultimately have to allow removal of that tree if there's no other option. But it couldn't be just because a homeowner wanted to get rid of it maybe, but I'm sorry, rid of a tree because their ADU needs to be on the left side of the property or whatever the case may be.
That helps. Thank you. Any additional clarifying questions before we open for public comment? Okay, let's go to the public comment slide. If you would like to make a public comment on agenda item six D. If you would like to make a public comment on agenda item six D, proposed amendments to the protected tree ordinance, now is the time to speak. You can join via Zoom or you can join on the phone pressing star nine and then star six to unmute when called upon. Dara, is there anyone in the waiting room for public comment on this topic?
Yes, we have Tom. Tom, I have allowed you to speak and you have two minutes.
Okay, there we go. I'm unmuted. Yes, hi, this is Tom Felty. Good evening, Commissioners. I've been following this ordinance since September and I like most of what I see, but there's a couple of areas where I still think I'd like to see more. And that is, first of all, in the area of fees. The I know it was in the in the presentation, it was said that if an arborist could be approved by the council, then there may be a chance of substantially reducing the fees for dead tree removal. My question is, is if since that's not going to be decided until March 28th, is it premature to at this time recommend that this proposed ordinance be adopted by the council in full as is stated? So that's one issue. The second one is, although there's areas there for notification, it's notification of a removal of a tree. I wanted to see more language there about notification to homeowners of the existence of the ordinance and also to tree service companies that operate in the area. Back in September, I have suggested a permit process for tree service companies so that we could have some control over what they do and what they don't do, because oftentimes the homeowners refer to the tree service company for advice on what can be removed and what with with or without a permit. And finally, the third thing is, as I noticed, there was a mention made based upon a comment within the last day about redwood trees being a no plant tree and that that should be added to this ordinance that you're about to vote on. I don't know why a redwood tree is a tree that is bad to plant and it should be removed from its heritage tree status. So perhaps the arborist can answer that question. But most important to me is the idea of timing of approval, which is to say that the arborist will not be approved before you all recommend this ordinance to be forwarded to the council for their approval. Thank you.
And thank you. And let's let's if the arborists could briefly respond, and I don't want to lose that that clarifying question about the redwood tree, expound a little bit more on why it should not be considered a heritage.
Just before Ellen.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, Andrea, go ahead.
So before our worst response, I did want to clarify, redwood trees will still be considered protected. So existing redwood trees would be protected. What we're proposing to change is allowing a redwood tree to be a replacement tree for another heritage tree or even for its own self just because most of the lots around here are pretty small. And as we know, redwood trees grow very fast. I believe though, there and Richard, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there is the possibility for a city arborist to approve a redwood tree as a replacement in certain instances if the homeowner really wanted one, since the arborist has has the ability to make other recommendations. So that I just wanted to clarify that point with redwood trees. Any existing trees would still be protected, of course. In terms of the the fees, so the council is looking at their budget on March 28th. And if recommended, this ordinance would be going to them on April 11.
Eleven.
So the budget would, you know, hopefully be adopted with this this change before they get the first reading of the ordinance. And then to the third item with the tree service companies, we definitely agree that there needs to be education and outreach for tree service companies. And we're looking at how we can, you know, list the ones that are aware of the San Carlos policies or, you know, committed to them so we can have that available for homeowners, things like that. So I think that answers the three questions, but I'm.
Thank you. That's good. And Ellen, if you will still give you a chance to comment on the why redwood trees aren't good for San Carlos in new plantings.
Well, they're high water use trees. If you looked at my memo, you'll see that my one of my primary criteria for putting a tree on the preferred tree list was that it had a low water use rating according to the water use classification of landscape species known as WUCALES. It's all in there about where that website is and how they operate. But redwoods, I see drought stressed redwoods throughout the Bay Area. And in addition, they're often very large. So even where they are still healthy and getting enough water, they often have to be either removed or chopped down to, you know, very unesthetic ways because they are out of scale for small urban lots. So on my list, I didn't go so far as saying do not plant, but I basically put them as not recommended for pretty much anything that they should not be preferred. You don't have to go as far as banning them, but I certainly would think there's a very narrow band of circumstances under which I would recommend one.
Thank you for clarifying. Let's continue with public comments. Dara, is there anyone else in the waiting room for public comment?
Yes, we have Zenovi. Zenovi, I have allowed you to talk and you have two minutes.
Bruce.
Zenovi, you seem to have gone on mute. We don't hear you, Zenovi.
Hello?
Oh, now we hear you.
Okay. It didn't work the first time. Sorry. Okay. So I am concerned about the paragraph E of the decision making criteria section of the protected tree removal permit and decision making criteria chapter. Okay, because the current wording leaves a lot of room for misinterpretation, misuse, and abuse. Particularly troublesome is a phrase, while achieving the applicant's reasonable development objectives or reasonable economic enjoyment of the property as a as a pretext or an excuse to remove the tree. And the problem is, and how is reasonable defined? That opens the door for abuse. I have a simple recommendation that the ordinance is straightforward was, you know, says no healthy heritage tree removal is permitted under any circumstances unless the existing trees started to endanger human life or existing human dwelling. Developers have to assess the sites targeted for future development with regards to existing healthy heritage trees and plan accordingly. They cannot count that, you know, city is gonna roll over and approve the any tree removal. In case a heritage tree is removed or damaged by design or accident during construction, then penalty shall be planting a new tree and fine of $5,000 plus construction permit withdrawal for a period of 10 years. So that everybody would know ahead of time that they 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 cannot plan on buying a piece of land like the Black Mountain Development and try to remove 159 heritage trees just because. Okay, this is not right.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Dara, is there anyone else in the waiting room for public comment?
Yes, we have Shital. Shital, I have allowed you to talk and you have two minutes.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. So I wanted to expand on one of the questions that David posed earlier in terms of the structural damage piece. So if there is a heritage tree causing structural damage to the home and you have to replant a heritage tree, is the expectation that it has to go in the exact same site or could it be moved to a different part of the property? So that's my first question. And I don't know if you want me to stop in between to allow for answers or.
Better just ask all your questions in the two minute window.
Great. And then the second question is, how do the fees apply if the tree is located both on the public property side and on the private property side? So it's sort of in half. Those are my two questions.
Okay, thank you. Andrea, do you want to very briefly respond to those?
I can answer those.
Oh, thank you.
Ruka, whoever's appropriate.
Yeah, so for the first question, no, it doesn't have to be replanted at the exact same location. It can be anywhere for the arborist on site. And the second question was, if the tree is located half on the public property and half on the private property, how do the fees apply? So any tree that is located in front of a property, the property owner is responsible for its maintenance and also removal. So as far as I know, the application fee would be would need to be paid in full by the property owner adjacent or in front of that tree.
Thank you.
And I would also like to through the chair, I would like to clarify the public comment previously, like before this public comment, I would like to clarify that the section E that the person was referring to was incorrect. I don't know that there are too many attachments to this packet. So I think what he was referring to was the incorrect section. What he should refer to is on packet page 102, which is the correct proposed language, which does not have any language such as reasonable, financial, or whatever was highlighted during this the comment.
Thank you for that clarification. That's important. It was confusing. There's multiple versions of the old and new. So you got to look at the new one, starting on.
Correct.
On page ninety-six, I got confused. So I know page is ninety-six to one oh nine is the proposed ordinance. So look there, you'll be happy, much happier with that wording. Let's let's move on for additional, sort of making exceptions to the normal. Normally, we just receive public comments, but some of these are sort of obvious clarifying points that's in our benefit to look at. Usually, we just receive the comments. Let's move on to the next public comment if there is one. Dara?
Yes, Liz, I have allowed you to talk and you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Liz Reniker and I'm sitting here with my wonderful neighbor Anastasia. She asked for my help in obtaining a tree removal permit and I was happy to help her investigate the situation and complete the application process. Unfortunately, we ran into a few problems along the way. Anastasia has a very large sweet gum tree, also known as liquid amber, that was originally planted by the city of San Carlos many decades ago in the strip between the sidewalk and the street. Because of its size, it's now considered a protected tree with a very large trunk circumference. But the problem is this tree is a safety issue for Anastasia as well as the general public. It's pretty hazardous because for several months of the year, this tree drops round hard seed pods that have caused several people to slip on the sidewalk or sprain ankles. Because of this, Anastasia is afraid to walk outside of her home for most of the year. Additionally, the cost of maintaining this tree is high. Not only does she pay for a gardener to help collect these seed pods on a regular basis from her sidewalk in the driveway, she's also considering looking into costs for having an arborist treat the tree to prevent the seed pods from forming and that would be an extensive annual cost on top of hiring a company to prune it. Additionally, the roots continue to lift up the sidewalk and cause a tripping hazard and she's also spent several thousands of dollars repairing the sidewalk many times. So our concerns when we were looking into this process were first that the cost of the permit application is extremely high. We know we just went through this process in recent months and saw that it was about $713. And this is especially difficult for a senior citizen like Anastasia who's on a fixed income. So that's a big barrier for her to try to understand what her options are. And the second issue is that want to make sure homeowners have reasonable rights to determine what trees are on their properties. The city of San Carlos didn't consult Anastasia when planting this tree and now she feels stuck. She's not sure if she'll get an approval to remove it. Anastasia is sitting with me here, so I would love for her to have her own two minutes to speak if that would be allowed.
Okay, since they're separate people.
Hello, my name is Anastasia. I have lived in the city of good living for forty-two years. I raised my kids and grandkids in San Carlos. I love San Carlos. But like David said, it's a safety issue for me. I'm eighty-four years old. My balance is no good. I'm going through therapy. Every time I go out, the gumballs are next to my car. It's all over the sidewalk, my driveway up to my steps. I'm almost like a prisoner in my house at night. I can't, when time comes to take the garbage out, I'm scared to death. So I'm I know that removing the tree is a protected tree, but at the same token, people should be protected. And for me, it's a safety issue and a protection. If I fall and I break my hip or another bone, another bone at eighty-four, either I'll end up in a wheelchair or dead. So my safety is my concern and the safety of the public. I live on Britain. People walk their dogs. As you know, they go to school to breed an acres. The kids walk there. People run. There is a lot of traffic, human traffic, and a lot of people have slipped and fell. So I'm requesting that I be able to take away that tree that it's a hazard for me and the public. It's not only me, but it's the public too. So I appreciate any consideration about that. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for your comments and we'll register those and and consider them going forward. Of course, we don't respond to a specific that's specific instance that would be up for the staff. Dara, are there additional callers?
There are none at this time.
Okay, I'm waiting a few seconds. We'll see if anybody else jumps in before we close the public comment. Okay, there doesn't seem to be the one else waiting for public comment, so I would entertain a motion to close the public comment.
I'll move that we close the public comment period.
Commissioner Bradley, was that a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Okay, discussion for the planning commissioners. Would anybody like to make comments? Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you, Chair Ruf. I'll jump in and start. I think this ordinance goes a long way towards ensuring a significant and thriving population of trees in San Carlos. I appreciate all of the thoughtful work that went into this ordinance. One of the things that bubbled to the top for me is we heard not only tonight, but in previous study sessions from the public, just how high our tree removal fees are. And it seems to me, and I support the idea of bringing on a full time or a part time arborist to help with this tree program. But I think ultimately, this arborist, having him or her on site, will trickle down to the homeowner and result in less money out of pocket that the homeowner has to spend because the arborist is going to be more efficient in writing the reports. And we used to bill for tree removal on a cost recovery basis. So I think this arborist can help us in a number of ways. And one of them is to respond to what we've heard from so many callers, let's get our tree removal fees down. So I support the changes that staff has brought before us this evening and in particular, the bringing on of an arborist. Thank you. Thank you.
Support what Commissioner Garvey has said. And just want to also add, the city of good living thrives on neighbors helping neighbors, as I forget her name, but who represented Alexandria, I think. And that's one of the reasons I'm on the planning commission is to help people individually and to help the city as a whole, of course, and there's some transportation and housing issues. But it warms my heart to hear a neighbor come in and speak for someone else. And by the way, I'm older than you, Alexandria.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Well put. Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Well put. Commissioner Vice Chair Clements?
Thank you. I also enjoyed hearing neighbors helping with processes for the city, which aren't always easy to figure out, right? Everyone knows that. No offense to cities. It's just processes, you know? People have to figure them out. In reading the long packet, looking through it, I did see our minutes from the earlier meeting in which we considered the tree ordinance and, or I guess the urgency ordinance, or received the study session, I should say. And then, I, you know, looking through the minutes and our comments, I felt like staff really had responded to a lot of the things that we had brought up. And the staff arborist was right from the minutes that we had encouraged the staff arborist to be pursued and it is being pursued and, and hopefully budgeted in short order. And so I think that that is a really important part of this program. And I do hope that the, the use of the arborist and potential fee reductions isn't also another important part of the program to make this really work for the residents as we also try to make it work for our environment and for our greenery. I also noted that the comments were that we hope that there's wide distribution of information that this ordinance is going to be considered again when it comes back. And I was very happy to see the postcard in the mail because I think a lot of people are interested in this topic here. So thank you to staff for making that happen and for all of your work on this. It's a considerable amount of work, but I think it's worth it because I think it's, it's helping the environment and it's helping the beauty of, of our lovely community. And, you know, again, I appreciate the sensitivity of the trees that today we need to think about replacing. And while I do like redwood trees, I appreciate the arborist or the consultant's comment that we do have to think about being water-wise and in proportionate scale to what our community, the size of our community and our lots. So I feel like a lot of thought has been put into the work.
Kristin may have froze.
Thanks.
Let's see. I had an internet glitch there. Are you hearing me now?
No, I think we're hearing.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Yeah, I also, I think, I think the ordinance has been shaped according to, to feedback from the planning commission and from the public and really appreciate that. And I think it's headed in the right, the right direction. The, as far as the fee issue goes, the, the ordinance as written builds in the arbor, the city arborist's role and, and decision-making capability. And so if the ordinance is passed, then that, that efficiency would happen. But there still would be, I think, a, a cost recovery basis for setting the fees, which potentially could be fairly expensive. So I'm somewhat, still somewhat concerned that, that it's going to cost $700 to, to deal with your tree is, is going to be the way forward with the possible exception made for, for dead trees. But so that is a concern. I'm not sure what to do about that. I mean, you could, you could say perhaps a cap, a cap on the fees or some sort of a more standardized schedule so people understand, including, including us and the city council, what, what we're talking here as opposed to just dividing the cost of the, of the arborist across the, the, the number of permits that are received, applications that are received. So I'm a little, I'm still a little concerned that the fees, that we haven't controlled the fees adequately. But the, I, I note that the, the fee issue is not what we're, not what we're endorsing for, to recommend to the city council at this moment, but we could, if we wanted, attached to our endorsement of the, the thing that we would like, ask them to seriously consider as a separate, as a separate topic, seriously consider keeping a cap on those fees because I think it can be counterproductive to our mission of promoting healthy tree management if the, if the fees are in the $700 plus range for even the basic operations. That's my first comment. And I guess in the spirit of taking turns, I have another comment on a different, a different part of this, but I'll, I can hand it off to, to Vice Chair Clements and then I'll take my turn after her.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I, I just had an idea from what you were saying was that I'm wondering if we could suggest that the fee schedule also include a hardship waiver element to the program so that if fees were exorbitant, but somebody were on a fixed income, for instance, that they could potentially apply for a hardship waiver for the fees, as an example. And I also appreciate that fees generally are cost recovery for staff. That's kind of the definition of fees in general, that reimburse for staff time. So, but I, I do think it might be warranted, at least under a financial, financially stressed situation that someone might not have to pay for that service. So just wanted to raise that potential. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I, I like that idea myself. Maybe that's something we could, can ask the city council to, to consider, the staff in the city council to consider. Because if, if you're building a, a new, a new development, cost of dealing with a permit fee is just part of the business and your eyes are wide open to that. I'm less worried about that. But a lot of the older houses that might have people on more limited income have big trees. And so that is, that is an angle. I like that a lot.
Like it too. Good idea.
Maybe we can consider making that a, a please consider addition to our, our recommendation to the city council. The, the next, the next thought, I wanted, I wanted to clarify, if somebody is building a new house or, or building and a heritage tree is in the way, how would that be, this kind of a question, back in the question category for staff? How would that be handled? I mean, can they, can you just pay the price per tree and cut it down? Or can that be, can that just stop you from building? Or something else? Explain what would happen in that scenario. I want to build a structure, building that otherwise would be allowed. There's a heritage tree in the, in the way.
Yeah, so that kind of protected tree removal would fall under the section criteria E development. And in that situation, the applicant would have to submit few design alternatives that prove that a reasonable design is not possible, that would help save the tree. And that would be reviewed by staff and the city arborist and then the decision would be rendered based on that.
I see. So the, if it's smack in the middle and there's just no way to, to put up, to utilize the property, then, then removal of the tree might be allowed. But if, if reasonable adjustments could be made, then.
But yeah, if, if they were, if they can submit at least two design options that prove that there is no other reasonable design that would help build a new house and save the tree, then the decision could be considered to remove the tree. But that would again be at the discretion of the city arborist and by review from the planning division.
And so is the presumption that the property owner is entitled to build, to build to the, their maximum envelope if, so another, the answer couldn't be, no, you can't build a 200 square foot house. You only can build a 100, 1,000 square foot house because there's a tree. I mean, but, or is the assumption that, yeah, you need to be able to build your 2,000 square feet that would otherwise be allowed? See what I mean?
If I could jump in and, and answer that, just to, just to step back a little bit, and I think this is what one of the earlier public comments was referring to. Our previous code had a pretty general exception or regulation that would allow a property owner to remove a tree, you know, based on general enjoyment and economic, economic enjoyment of the property. And that was, you know, ones that we were seeing come in all the time. And I think, to be fair, was probably one of the, the ones that was the biggest concern to staff and, and probably the community. So we took that away as part of, as part of development. And under this new regulation, I would say that it's not just a numeric standard of, for example, if I, you know, if you make me keep this tree, I'm going to lose 200 square feet. I don't think that would be an argument to get rid of the tree. What we've seen is, you know, we've had one come in, for example, where we also looked at the value of the tree. So they were two, the one I'm thinking of was two Italian cypresses that were in good health anyways. But they were on, the way they were situated is part of the house would have to be very narrow to like fit between them and keep, and keep both of them. And so there's definitely design measures that can be taken, whether it's, you know, building an L-shaped house or maybe removing one tree and not two. So it's not just going to be a numeric standard. I think that's something we definitely want to stay away from in terms of deciding what's reasonable or not. And I think it's important to point out that if there is a high-value protected tree on site, that the, you know, the option that the homeowner wants the most for their new home might not be the one that ends up being approved because there's another option that allows, you know, them to keep the tree. Maybe it's not their first choice of how everything's designed. But that, that's something we really want to take into account. And even along those, those same lines, we've narrowed it even further to talk about damage to habitable space. So not, you know, removing a, a healthy tree that's protected because your walkway, you know, in your backyard is going to be going there and you want the tree gone. So we've narrowed it in a few ways. And, and sorry, that was kind of a drawn-out response, but I would say it, it needs to be, the, the burden of proof is on the applicant to demonstrate why the tree needs to go, basically.
Okay, that, that helps. These are, these are not easy and so it's good to understand. I think, and it seems like the new ordinance does grapple and define these issues pretty well, much better than in the past where, where it was kind of a judgment call without a lot of guidelines for the staff to make. So, so, so I think I'm, I think it's ordinance addressing, in my opinion, this, the proposed ordinance addresses that concern pretty well. I wanted to make sure we got, got it out there exactly how, how it would work in those scenarios. This is of interest to a lot of people, including us as commissioners. Any other thoughts before we compose our, our recommendation? Can we have the, the slide with the recommendation on it? The resolution? I guess it's the resolution. Or is it a recommendation? So we, we spoke, Commissioner Clements had, had, I thought, a very wise suggestion of encouraging the city council to consider, so we can say we adopt this resolution and encourage the city council to, to look into how we can have a, there's maybe a couple of elements there, a, a subsidized fee structure, an explicit fee structure, a capped fee structure. Those are kind of the three, the three points that I, that I see that came out from all of us. Do we have support to, to kind of add that additional language? Commissioner Vice Chair Clements?
I could make the motion and then we could see.
Sure.
Okay.
Propose, you're, you're very good at reciting this. Go ahead.
I recommend that we adopt a resolution recommending that the city council introduce an ordinance to fully replace San Carlos Municipal Code Section 18.18.070 Trees and Amendments to 18.41 Terms and Definitions. And also recommend that the city council consider a fee, that the fee schedule associated with these sections include a financial hardship waiver for financially stressed residents regarding, should we limit it to tree removals?
I, I don't know what.
Or should we not?
Pruning, pruning can also be a.
Okay, so just, and recommend that they, okay, I could try that again. And I recommend that the city council consider a related fee resolution, including a financial hardship waiver for residents related to work under the sections of the municipal code.
And President Chair, may I, may I ask a clarifying question for staff?
Please.
Whether your motion would also include the change that was mentioned earlier this evening about redwood trees and not having them on the preferred list for replanting?
Oh, that's not in the, in the proposed. That was a, okay, I thought that was.
I was wondering how that was being handled because it wouldn't, it wasn't included in the package.
Because we kind of want to capture and carry that concept along. It would be useful to include that. So we need another and.
I could, I could do a moreover.
Yes, a moreover. Let's have a moreover.
Okay, moreover. I recommend that we accept staff's recommendation to limit the use of redwood trees to replace heritage trees, given the findings in the staff and, in the staff report and supplements.
I'll second that.
And could we have a, a, a reading of that, of how that was captured? Just to make sure, so that.
The big mess.
Yes, and we'll, we'll definitely wordsmith this a little bit.
But that's okay.
But yeah, so adopting the resolution as proposed along, and I'll just combine with the recommended changes for redwood trees to not be on the preferred replacement list. And also conveying, I would say unanimous, but I'll double check, unanimous support for consideration of a resolution to the fee schedule to allow for a fee waiver for financial hardship, fixed incomes. I think seniors were also mentioned on a previous meeting, so it could be a few different things, but to have council consider that as part of the fee update as well.
To support that, but I would add there'd be a cap.
Oh, and a cap.
So that is an, an additional thought, idea, and I.
That was your, that was.
It was. It was. And, and so it sort of goes one step additional from what Commissioner Vice Chair Clements was suggesting. And in the spirit of keeping, keeping those, making people comfortable with the, that the fees have a, are finite, I, I support that. So let's get some words out there and then we can see what the other commissioners think. That if I may suggest that I have to have an and in there. have to have an and in there, and, um, have a capped fee structure for defined standard permits, something along that line.
Um, if I might, um, procedural, I don't want to do the hardcore procedural stuff. Technically, that'd be a, a friendly amendment to the basic motion, which is a long one. That I would prefer if we consider separately.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Sure.
Okay.
That way we can have better discussion. We can, we can.
Yeah, just about capping of fees, yeah.
Okay, so let's put that aside and, um.
I will resecond the motion because there was the addition with the, with the one other item, so I will second the motion that is on the table. With the redwood trees and the financial hardship.
Yes, as, as Andrea read it out to us, and I think I heard Commissioner, yeah, I think we've got a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there a discussion?
Is there a discussion?
We adding the cap?
The cap will discuss.
Not to this motion.
We'll discuss that next. Procedurally, um, we had a motion, so, um, and this was a new thing, so we'll, we'll talk about that next, so we can add that. That's an additional recommendation to the city council if we get agreement.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any, uh, discussion before we put that, uh, motion to vote?
Um, I would say the financial hardship may not want to be, we may not want to be specific for seniors or those unfixed incomes. I mean, for someone who may be having a temporary, um, you know, about with, uh, unemployment, but maybe young, um, may qualify for something like this. So I think just a definition of financial hardship and then, um, leave it to staff to define how one would show that and, and not be more limiting than that. Um, I would be, uh, fine with me. That's what I would err on the side of. I also don't want to assume that every, um, senior is low income. They are not necessarily, nor are they low on assets necessarily. So, you know, I, I think it's really about ability to afford something. So I, I think that's a good staff and attorney question. How would you evidence that?
And, and that was, and your motion, as you stated it, did not have those, um, bits. Um, so I think we can just edit that, those out, um, for what we're considering on the table now. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah.
So the motion, um, and the second still stand. Is there any additional discussion before we put it to vote? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley? Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Good, that, that was the, the heavy lifting, and now we're left with the. Now we're left with the, um, the additional, um, concept of suggesting that the city council consider a capped, um, the two concepts I had uh, were, were a capped one, or at least a, a, a standardized fee list as opposed to, um, well, it depends how many hours the arborist, um, spends on your case, kind of fee thing, so um, to make people comfortable with dealing with the city, uh, to, um, to bring their tree problem forward. Um, so we.
Does that a motion would, would you like to make?
So, uh, yeah, maybe that's the best way to, uh, to get it in front of us and then we can see what you guys think. So I, I, um, I move that, um, that we recommend to the city council a, um, a capped fee structure and a, um, and where appropriate, and ex, um, standardized fee structure for, um, for activities under the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Good, let's discuss.
Okay.
Um, so, um, maybe staff could clarify. Uh, one of my thoughts is that not all fees are paid or are, um, charged to the homeowner, right? Some fees would be charged to developers um, for tree replacements, for tree and loo fees, um, as examples. So, could you, um, kind of review what the fees would be associated with the ordinance? And i- is this off topic? Is this still in the topic enough that we can keep talking?
I think so.
Yeah, I think we can, you know, the commission can definitely, um, ask council to consider it. Um, but as you, you know, said, it's kind of pulled out separate from the ordinance itself. Um, a few things too about fees and, and this, um, you know, you'll bear with me. I just want to also explain for, for the benefit of the public attending of how we currently review it and why the fees are so high and, and why staff leads those all decrease significantly. Um, right now, we take in, um, and, and we do take it in, um, for any application, whether it's a developer or homeowner. Um, so it's, but it's the same fee in terms of the permit. Um, when we take in an application, we take in processing time for staff as well as a deposit to cover, um, arborist's time, as well as, um, some other, uh, fees that are like technology fees and, and, and pretty minor. Um, so the ta- the staff processing time is really, um, something that we think just off the bat would be knocked down because we're not going to be, staff is not going to be involved with it to the same degree. Um, that fee, as well as most of the other fees in the city, um, are adopted by council after a fee studying analysis of how much time it takes. Um, you know, for instance, um, are there different departments working on it? How much time it takes for them? Is there a public notice involved? Just all these different factors. Um, so that's one thing we think will, will, um, go away or, or be reduced significantly. Um, the other one, and, and I would argue is probably going to be more significant is right now when we send an arborist out to look at a, at a site, because the ordinance requires staff to decide whether the tree is supposed to be removed, not the arborist. We as staff require pretty comprehensive arborist reports to be able to make that decision. Um, and, and that's, that's because I think, you know, mainly we don't want to approve a tree if it's not, you know, if it, it shouldn't be. Um, and we just don't have the expertise or knowledge to do that. Um, and so having an arborist go now, and we've seen this in other cities, um, and, and in fact, most of the cities that have arborists, their fees are substantially less. But what we're envisioning is an arborist could go to the site, um, and, you know, make their determination there. Maybe, you know, they still have to do paperwork, but it doesn't need to be a ten-page arborist's report. It doesn't need to be every tree on the property marked out and analysis taken. And, you know, it's something that inherently, for the most part, I think they would be able to do relatively quickly. Um, the, the second part to that is even once we get the report, I would say at least half the time, if not more, we're doing back and forth with the arborist to clarify something. Um, so that's what we do now, and I think that's where a bulk of the, um, the fees are coming from. So in terms of moving forward under this ordinance, um, the idea is that if council approves the budget, we would go out, um, with an RFP to, for one or more uncolored arborists um, to be able to basically take over most of the tree-related work. Uh, removal permits, prying permits, um, reviewing tree protection plans, which also adds up quite quickly. Um, those, generally speaking though, for, for new homes are, you know, passed on to the developer, so that, that might not be as big of a concern. Um, but if it's a homeowner who's, you know, tearing their house down and rebuilding anew, and they, they're paying the same amount to have everything looked at by the arborist. Um, and so in terms of the new fees, we're anticipating it will probably still be a deposit system. Um, unless we figure out a fee to, to kind of get out of that with our, our consultant on fees, but really want it to be just a, you know, the cost of the arborist, that's what's passed on, and that's it. Um, with, of course, the smaller technology fees and things like that. Um, so that's what we're envisioning. Um, the council does have a policy in general, not just with this, of full cost for, cost, um, recovery. And so that is, that is a policy decision they would have to make for this. Um, but I think that even without that, the fees will be reduced quite significantly. We're just not sure yet what that will be. Um, so I'm not sure if that completely answered the question or not.
Yeah, if I could just build on that for a quick second, that, so the cost of the arborist's work would still have to be reimbursed. But some of the, the reporting would go down, and some of the sta- the staff review of the arborist's reports, that work would go away potentially. Um, but the cost of the arborist is not negligible, right? So you know, um, I guess, thank you very much for that information, Andrea, because I, I know that fees, to those who aren't involved with cities and fees, you might think that it's kind of simple to cut fees. It is not simple to cut fees because, as Andrea said, most fees pay for cost recovery, and if you cut them, that's, um, that's a policy decision, but the funds to cover the staff costs do have to come from somewhere. And so they have to come from the general fund, or they have to come from a different program. It gets redirected and has to be eligible for the use that it's redirected to. So, um, so it's not simple to even do a hardship waiver, um, you know, that that's already an ask. Um, and so anyway, I think to further kind of go down the road of caps that when we don't, when we haven't seen the new, what the new fee schedule is, and then standardization, it, it um, in my experience, fees don't work that way, and literally the, um, um, in my experience, fees are not allowed. For instance, you couldn't do a standardized fee and then accrue a reserve and then spend down the reserve, just for, you know, easy, for easiness to understand. That's not allowed. Um, because it's just cost recovery. It can be no more, it should be no less, right? And so i- it's actually kind of a fine art to, to rejigger fees every year. Um, so I guess I wanted to get into this a little bit more and figure out who is paying the fees. Um, so that said, if, um, if this motion wants to somehow, um, talk about fees that would be charged to the homeowner, um, you know, that we would be, that you're interested in still making sure that they are affordable, kind of in a broad way. Um, I could get behind something like that, but I think, um, uh, saying exactly how that might work gets to be trickier. So those are my thoughts.
Or I might suggest that we just, uh, uh, dodge it and say we strongly recommend that the city council consider doing that. But them, as a don't like to do that, but they do have the authority and we don't, but I think we're all in agreement. We, we struggling with the seven hundred dollar permit for.
Yeah, that, that may be, um, we don't need to tell the city council how to achieve, but we can convey what our concern is and ask them to address that. I think that's also what Vice Chair Clements was suggesting. And that may be a more palatable, um, yeah. I mean, in any case, they just listen to us, uh, or not as they please. Um, and so, um,
Is that anyway?
Yeah, but I think, I, I, it's not only me personally, but from the public comment that we've received, uh, we, we see quite a few comments now and in the, in this prior study session about concern with the fees and the potential negative impact. And so, um, I want to make sure, I mean, we're make sure that everything is done that's possible to keep the, the processes as efficient as possible, so that the fees are as efficient as possible, as low as possible. So, um, so maybe we could have a, um, maybe I will withdraw my earlier motion and, um, and swap in a, um, a new one. Can I do that? Um, thank you, um, and which would be, um, that the, um, that the planning commission recommends that the city council, um, emphasize process efficiencies to keep fees to homeowners as low as possible, um, something like that. And that, that's kind of candidate language. I don't know if there's room for i- improvement. If somebody has a thought how to improve that, I would, um, welcome that thought before we turn it into a, an actual motion.
Well, I think that that works, yeah, with the objective of keeping fees to homeowners um, as low as possible. That's a good motion. Okay. I would second that motion.
Okay, we'll consider that my motion, and I think that was a second, uh, additional discussion on that? Hearing done, let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley? Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes.
Good idea, Chair, thank you. That was a good idea, yeah.
Okay, good. Let's move on in our agenda to the item eight, Reports, Correspondence and General Information. So, starting with Report on Recent City Council Actions. Do we have a report?
Do, thank you, Chair Ruth. Um, and I'll also note that Lisa Forrest sent an email, um, earlier today to the commission, so some of these will be repeats, um, but I would like to, to say them again. Uh, so a, a few, a few actions by council, um, at the past meeting on the fourteenth. Uh, the council adopted its strategic goals and objectives for twenty twenty-two calendar year. Um, and those were emails. He was an attachment, so you should have those available. Um, they also reappointed Planning Commissioner Garvey for another three-year term, uh, through twenty, June twenty twenty-five. Excited about that. Um, and then, uh, the council also voted to extend the closure of the seven hundred block of Laurel uh, through September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. So that, uh, program has been extended as well. And that is it for council action.
Thank you. Are there planning commission comments or reports?
Um, I have a report. I, I would like to congratulate Commissioner Garvey on her reappointment. Thank you very much.
I would like to second that and, uh, uh, this is Women's Month. And behind every successful man, then's a, an astonished woman. But he got it.
Okay, and I'll, I'll echo.
It's a joke, but it's the truth.
I'll, I'll echo, echo the congratulations.
Thanks, everybody. I'm looking forward to the next three, three years. Thank you very much.
Any additional planning commission reports or comments? Let's move on to correspondence. Andrea, do we have correspondence?
Um, nothing in addition to what's been mentioned in, in conjunction with the proj- projects this evening.
Okay, let's move on to planning staff comments, reports and updates of current projects.
Sure, uh, so just a few things. The next City of Good Living newsletter will be sent to residents in early April. Um, there will be quite a few planning topics in there, including SC nine information, um, a new, uh, plan for the northeast industrial area within the city. Um, and also our new objective design and development standards process. Um, and that, that process is for single unit, multi-unit, and mixed-use projects. Um, that, that project just, uh, started within the last week. Uh, and we will be announcing very soon a workshop. I believe it will be the first week of May um, for the public, uh, to provide comments on objective design standards. Um, so all of that information, um, will be included in the next newsletter. The, uh, composition of the DTAC, which is the Downtown Advisory Committee, um, for the upcoming plan will be decided by city council on April eleventh. The draft land use and housing elements, um, and any zoning changes associated with those um, are anticipated to be presented to the planning commission at a study such, study session on May sixteenth. And then, um, for immediate items, the next regular meeting will be Monday, April fourth. Um, we are anticipating a Mills Act contract for historic preservation on a three hundred chestnut um, and possibly, uh, minor updates to the ADU ordinance. Uh, that will either be going on April fourth or on April eighteenth. Um, and we should know that will be in the next day or two. And that is it for that item.
Andrea, I'm sorry, what was the study session on May sixteenth about?
Uh, the draft land use and housing elements.
Oh, got it.
As well as any zoning changes as a result of those.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that was Lisa had mentioned earlier.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. And with that, we can adjourn our planning commission meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Chair.
Good meeting.
Good meeting.
Yeah, good meeting, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Andrea.
Good job. Congratulations, Rucha, lots of work, right?
Thanks, Rucha, good job.